Good morning, council members, committee members and staff. Thank you. Richard Brand, I live at 281 Addison, and I'm here today to just speak. I'm glad to see this committee active. My whole thing, I've been working with the San Mateo County, which we know is just a mile away, on the renovation work of the long-delayed Dunbarton Rail project. We all know from the work that's gone on in the city with transportation is a priority, and I would encourage this group, now that you're going to be active monthly, and I'm glad to see that, to work in conjunction with the San Mateo County Transportation Commission on this project. There is an ongoing project with, in that organization, and I've attended the meetings. They're supposed to have a report out in April, and I made contact with the committee Councilman Berman last year, and as you probably know, nothing really happened. I would encourage this year's committee to take that under consideration, and I, last year, offered to be a liaison from the city to that group, and there was no action. However, I think that San Mateo County people did contact somebody in the city. I don't know if that took place or not. I talked to Jim Keen about this, and of course, we know Jim has been busy with other things lately. But because University Avenue runs from our border here, University down to Dunbarton Bridge, you know, this is a big element for us, and we all know the traffic conditions that exist in the city in the afternoon of traffic, trying to get onto that bridge. The vehicle bridge is overloaded, it just is insufficient to carry the demand, and I encourage our rail committee to look into and actively reach out to the San Mateo County Transportation Commission to work with them on this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this on oral communications? So, second speaker, Roland DeBruyn.
Yeah, and is this working? Okay. So, it's very brief. There is a quite substantial communication from Nadia Niyak, but the packet that's on the table is incomplete. I mean, this ends up halfway down, a letter, and then there's a bunch of letters behind it which are missing. It'd be nice to have the rest of the packet. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move on to item A, which is a review of rail activity since our last meeting, which was in September of last year. I think it was kind of seven updates. Josh, if you want to go there.
Sure. Included in your packet, I'm Josh Mello, the city's chief transportation official. Included in your packet are three briefing papers, which cover periods extending all the way back to, you know, when we brought Matt McDonald on as our rail program manager. Our intent is to provide these to you at every rail committee meeting, and key action items will be highlighted at the beginning of each briefing paper. This is part of the task that Matt McDonald is charged with, to support the rail committee. Michelle DeFrancia, Richard Davies, and Chris Metzger are here from Matt McDonald today, and Michelle is going to give you just a couple highlights from the briefing papers this month.
Michelle DeFrancia with Matt McDonald. There have been a lot of meetings that we've been attending as part of our program management services contract, starting last fall, is when we got started. I'll highlight a few of those meetings. The City and County Staff Coordinating Group for the Caltrain and High-Speed Rail Projects Along the Corridor is a meeting that occurs monthly. It supports the LPMG group, the Local Policymakers Group, which I know some of you are involved with. The CSCG meeting met a couple of weeks ago. Caltrain and High-Speed Rail Authority alternate each month with hosting those meetings, so the one that was held a couple of weeks ago, I'll give you a brief highlight, it was hosted by the High-Speed Rail Authority. I think the big announcement at that meeting is that they have delayed yet again the release of their preferred alternative for the San Francisco to San Jose section. It was originally scheduled to come out early this year. They're now looking at August, or summertime, to release the preferred alternative. There's also a delay with the environmental document. That should be coming out, the draft document, in the fall, they note as October, and then the final environmental document sometime next year, still to be determined. Other meetings that we've been attending include Community Working Group of High-Speed Rail Authority as part of their project. There was a meeting about a month ago. I think those meetings are held quarterly. This one was hosted in Santa Clara, the city of Santa Clara. Other highlights, just to give you a couple of other ones real quickly, include the Caltrain Electrification Project Funding Status. We included a briefing in our packet to you on that, as you probably know. The funding at the federal level has been suspended. They've deferred action on the $650 million funding, full funding grant, and we're hopefully going to hear back, I think, in the next two or three months. I believe Caltrain has sent out a press release since that time, noting that they're working with the contractor to extend their contract and work in good faith together. There's also some information on recent announcement about a Caltrain and UP Railroad agreement. UP intends to hand over their freight operations to a short-line operator, and there's a lot of information in the packet, I believe, detailed agreements, technical, legal agreements that have been sent your way as well. I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
I don't believe those were in the packet, were they?
The agreements are not included. They were just tolling agreements that I think Molly can answer any questions on, if we have a, we couldn't get the actual agreement between UP and Caltrain.
There's a line in here that at no time was grade steepness discussed during that. Is that accurate?
That's what we were told by Caltrain when we posed the question to them. Does the tolling agreement include any language regarding the grade? And they said no, to their knowledge, there's no language specifying grades.
So, do we have any other questions about the meeting so far? I have a few quick ones. What is the P3 procurement? It was mentioned in one of the reports for regional corridor approach. It said it would be eligible for P3 funding. I wasn't sure what that meant.
Is this for the HSR segment?
It was for grade SEPs, talking about multiple cities.
Oh, really? I didn't pick up on that.
Yeah, I'm not, maybe it was Measure B funding?
No.
Oh. I'm not sure of the P3 funding.
And then, so this is the first meeting with Matt McDonald. What is Matt McDonald's current status with High-Speed Rail? Are you guys working on High-Speed Rail?
We currently are not, to the best of my knowledge.
Nope.
Okay. And if you were, I guess, is there a way we would isolate kind of City of Palo Alto from High-Speed Rail activities within the company?
We have a formal methodology that we had done in the past for the previous studies. We would have done something like that, put a firewall in between, make sure no people are working in your face.
If I could jump in, that was one of the requirements in the RFP, was that they either have no work currently underway for the High-Speed Rail Authority, or that they form a firewall between the High-Speed Rail work and the City of Palo Alto work.
Okay, great. And then, just two other quick comments. One of the reports, I think page 11, mentioned other grade separation projects, but it was mostly, looked like Santa Clara County. It didn't include Menlo Park, Redwood City, other San Mateo cities, so just hope you would track those as well, as they work on their grade SEPs.
Yes, we've been in a data gathering process, and so we have met with City of Menlo Park, and we're in contact with Redwood City representative, and Burlingame, San Mateo, or other ones that we're tracking, and we can provide additional information in future packets, if you like.
Yeah, that'd be good. And then, the last one, High-Speed Rail mentioned that two of the three options could impact, the passing tracks could impact Palo Alto. Does that mean those two options have four tracks in Palo Alto?
Yes. I, we have not yet seen the track alignments, because that's supposed to be provided as part of the preferred alternative that they're going to release in the summer, but we could follow up with the High-Speed Rail Authority and request the detailed design information. So far, they've just provided conceptual line drawings at the meetings we've been attending.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, that would be a huge impact to us, so.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Okay, so if there are no other questions, we'll move on to item one, which is a discussion on the rail committee charter and goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, committee members. Hillary Yumon, the planning director. Staff had a brief discussion with the chair about starting off the rail committee's work this year with a discussion of the committee's goals for the year, and the chair asked us to look at the charter that existed for the rail committee. So, we really have two options for you here. We went back and found the charter, and it's a little dated, so we could either just review and consider adopting a short list of goals, and we have some suggestions on page two of the packet. Alternatively, the committee could invest the time in reviewing and updating the charter, which would really have to go back to the full council for adoption. So, two choices ahead for you this morning, and we're really at your disposal to discuss either one of these options.
Okay. If we have questions, I think we could do quick questions, and then, do we have any members of the public?
May I, one speaker?
Okay. Are there any quick questions?
Sure. So, I just want to make sure I understand what staff is suggesting. There's these high-level goals, which actually look fairly good to me. Then, there's a bunch of stuff in the guidelines, which probably should go back to the full council, because if we're going to embark on context-sensitive solutions, I'm not so sure that we should be so prescriptive, saying, you know, non-elevated alignment. I mean, I think if we're going to go to the community, we should basically go to the community with options on the table without predetermined outcomes. And I think that takes going back to the council to relook at this, so I'm not sure they're mutually exclusive.
You're right. I mean, the committee could set its goals for the year and, in parallel, work on updating the charter with the goal of sending that back to the council at some point during the year for an update. It's entirely up to you. We're happy to support either one.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, we have one speaker. Herb Borack.
Thank you, Chair DeBois, and good morning, everybody. I sent you a letter. These guidelines, as they refer to, was last updated by the city council, since they are the city council guidelines for the rail committee. So, whatever changes, if you make any, are recommendations to the city council, because just as any other committee of the council, normal process is to make recommendations to the council. The rail committee originally had a section that granted the committee the authority to act if it did not have the time to make a recommendation in a timely manner for the council to act, and according to the copy you have before you, that was deleted, though I don't recall, you know, that process, since it's been a number of years ago, since it gone through the previous rail committee. I believe that now that the local policymaker group of Caltrain has decision-making authority, that it should also be treated in the same way and be included in the guidelines, and it should be clear that this is council policy that should be followed by staff, as well as its committees and its representatives. There was, I believe, a LP, Local Policymaker Group meeting on the 23rd, last Thursday, and I don't know what happened on that. Some of that is related to the next agenda item. I got to talk about that in more detail at that time, but just as an example, Mayor Bird last year reported what he was doing twice to the council on LPMG. However, he did not provide the council when he had an opportunity to do with a copy of the resolution that he himself had participated in writing, and that he did it in a time in the council when nobody else could participate in the discussion, and he took silence as consent. So, I think that's a reason, based on that history, to LPMG, and I don't know who our representative is on the committee. The mayor's here, so either he is, or he's appointed somebody, and since the roster for the first time has not been in the public agenda packet, and when I checked it online, it doesn't indicate who's on that committee. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm on that committee, just so you know. Second speaker is Nadia Niyak.
Hi, good morning. So, I'm a little late. I may have missed some preamble, but regarding the guiding principles, I just wanted to say, the city made a commitment to context-sensitive solutions, but I feel like, since we're really embarking on this process now that there's real money because of Measure B, I feel like we kind of need to have a debrief for the entire council about what CSS really is, and we, there's an organization called Project for Public Spaces, which is a nonprofit, that specializes in helping communities go through this stuff, and it might be helpful to have them come out and speak to what CSS is, so we can be sure that the guiding principles are supporting both the mission that the city council has already decided on, but then also helps us understand what types of guiding principles we need as we go through the CSS process. And they may be covered by what we've done, we just wouldn't know, but without having an expert in CSS to look at it, it's kind of cart before the horse. So, I think there needs to be some updating, but we should be open to the fact that it may need to be tweaked, but I also would highly suggest that we bring in the CSS people. Thank you.
All right, so we'll come back to the committee for discussion. Anybody have any comments?
So, just at a high level, when I was looking over these, the charter, it did seem a little narrow to me, and I'm a little persuaded by the one speaker's comment that we wouldn't be looking at things like Dunbarton also. I don't know if we want to make that a change here, or if we go back to council on that, but I do think there's some expanded areas we should be looking at on this committee. And then, I'm also interested in what some of the speakers have said, that, you know, we should be clear with our council colleagues about whether we want to be making policy here without their consent, or explicitly with it, that they're giving us the authority to do so, and then, Tom, you might do that for us on the policymaker group, and that's all just clear from top to bottom.
Yeah, great. So, I do think we should adopt these high-level factors. I do think that what Nadia said is interesting. We might want to consider having a debrief on what context-sensitive solutions means. I have some concerns about how long this will take, and I think we need to get clarity on how the funds are going to be allocated, if it's going to be first-come, first-served, if, how soon do we need to have things that are shovel-ready so we don't miss funds? I think we need to answer all these questions so we can make decisions, and then I think we have to have a timeline to make decisions. And I think these are going to be difficult decisions about how we do grade separations. So, I don't want us to take this a five-year process and end up not doing grade separations. So, I think it's really incumbent upon staff a little bit to look into this and tell us, you know, how this is going to work in terms of giving out the money to the best they can. We may not know yet, you may not know. And then, to come up with a timeline, and to come up with a plan for how we go to the community, how we deal with choosing how the grade separations are done. I think that's, and what does, you know, we say context-sensitive solutions, and I think Nadia makes a good point. What does this exactly mean? I think we should, we should understand that, and we should understand the timing of that. And I'm sure there's contact-sensitive solutions heavy and contact-sensitive solutions light, and what that, and what that means. So, I think all of those should come before us. We should talk about it. The original rail committee, because things were moving so fast with High-Speed Rail, did have the ability to write letters and stuff if they couldn't go to council. To the extent that this committee is not under a time gun, I think it should go to council and should be the same way all other committees go. If we come up with something on, that's a unanimous vote, we should try and put it on consent. If, you know, if we can't come up with it, then we should go to council and talk about it. I am very concerned about our guiding principles that are here. I think a lot of them are really outdated, and I think we should, should take the time at the committee, frankly, to rethink of all these, and maybe today's not necessarily the day we do that, but I do think we should agendize it. We should think through which ones we want, if there are other ones we want, and then we should go to council. And if we had unanimous agreement, then obviously we could put it on consent, but I do think we should spend the time to do that. And there may be other ones we want to, we want to put in here. And then, my other thought is, in listening to what Nadia said, I was wondering if that would be worthwhile to have, before we do a full council on that, maybe we have the person come to the rail committee and explain context-sensitive solutions. And we spend the time here to understand it and to vet it, and then see if it's worthwhile to schedule a study session or whatever for council, and we can make that decision. So, those are my preliminary thoughts on this.
Eric?
Yeah, just really briefly. So, I think that would be a good idea. I would love to have somebody come and discuss context-sensitive solutions with the rail committee here, so I have a better understanding of it. The only thing I was going to say is, I'm struck in here by the fact that other cities in the region are already moving on grade separation strategies, and we're sort of, you know, sort of, still sort of congealing on how we're going to approach this, and I think we need to, I think that is the highest level, I'm going to use the word urgency as opposed to importance, and I think that, you know, we need to proceed expeditiously on it, and if we have to make, you know, not that we shouldn't look at other stuff, but let's make sure that that doesn't interfere with the grade separation effort.
Just a few quick thoughts. I think we're talking about potentially the largest change to Palo Alto since Oregon Expressway went in, so, I mean, grade SEPs is a huge deal, and I think it is going to be major focus of this committee. You know, I think, you know, council's already voted multiple times on CSS. I hear that both the need for urgency, as well as understanding what that means, so I think, you know, maybe, maybe an approach would be for either us to familiarize ourselves with it individually, and, but I think we should bring it to council as soon as we can, just in that interest of time. Overall, I thought actually most of the charter remained pretty, pretty good. I do think we could agendize and go through it in more detail, and I think, you know, clearly, we need to go to council for changes. There were a couple of ones I just wanted to call out. I think number eight, number 15, call for funding by High-Speed Rail, and I think we probably want to make that more flexible, and that we now have counting funding sources. We want to look for multiple funding sources. I am concerned that some of the goals that were suggested might weaken some of the principles that are still valid. So, one of the goals says we're going to monitor High-Speed Rail and advocate for grade SEPs, where we have quite a few principles about High-Speed Rail that I think are still valid, and I don't want to necessarily drop those. And then, and also these, this other goal here, that we undertake context-sensitive analysis, but then the second point is we consider results of community engagement. Those seem to be in conflict with each other. CSS is actually about community engagement and then coming up with a structured decision-making process. So, I'm not sure how we would do one without doing two. It's almost like two separate processes there. I do think, from the speaker, that we should restore the language about the role and authority of the committee. I'm not sure where that language is or was, and I think we should also maybe include the LPMG role, and it might be good to also include the ability to continue to write letters if there isn't time, but I think the general understanding is that we would go to council. So, I don't know if we need to make a motion, or if staff wants to take that as advisement to maybe agendize a more detailed review.
Yeah, well, we can put on a future agenda a closer review of the charter and, you know, just kind of keep moving forward, maybe take your, your direction on the next steps about a CSS briefing and a hard look at the schedule in the context of the next agenda item. Our expectation was that we would get your direction to come back at the next meeting with some more information on all of that, so we could just maybe set this conversation aside until we have time.
Confused on one thing you said.
Yeah.
I was unclear about whether or not you were opposing having someone come and discuss with us what's at the rail committee, and I think that's really important.
I'm just hearing both of you guys, well, and all of us, I think we feel some urgency, and so if we wait a month to come back to us, and then it goes to council.
So, you're just suggesting we go straight to council on that?
Yeah, and then maybe, maybe we can, outside of a rail committee, rail committee meeting, become familiar with CSS, either on our own, or, you know, through other resources.
You know, we have really full agendas, and I can start the meetings at four.
Yeah.
And we can do that, if you want, but, you know, in many ways, this is the committee that's going to have to do it. And, you know, we're probably not going to come to council on a lot of these issues before we have some sense of what we're going to recommend to council, and I really think that it would be really helpful, it would be helpful for me to understand what we mean by context-sensitive solutions on a practical, nitty-gritty basis. I don't know what that means. And, you know, to do it on my own is not going to be something that's going to be that easy, so I really would like to agendize that, frankly, as soon as possible that we can get it done.
I guess, could we maybe look at agendizing in parallel, like, bring it here in a month, but also see if we get it to council in five weeks or whatever?
Well, you know, we have to look at our schedule, and we can see, in the range of all things that go on the council agenda, where that will fall. I'm not going to commit to where it would go without talking to Ed and talking to Jim and, you know, looking at the whole thing holistically of when we can get it. But obviously, you know, all of these things are important, and we need to move it forward. I'm not trying to block it, saying, come to council. I'm just saying, let's not hold it up and not do it on the notion that we need to get it to council as soon as possible. All right?
Yep.
So, you know, I think we can do what we can to see if we can come back to your next meeting, which is this, later this month, on the 22nd, with a summary or a briefing, if we can swing it from an outside expert, and your, you know, kind of a tee-up a schedule for your review, and then if the, you know, committee is okay with that, you could advance it to the council, or, you know, ask us to make revisions at that time.
Okay. All right. So, moving on to item number two, which is a review of, and provide directions on the draft rail program schedule, community engagement plan, circulation, study, scope of work, funding programs, the Caltrain-Union Pacific Agreement, and other topics, rather large thing. So, I guess, staff, do you have a presentation?
Sure. Thank you, Josh Mello, chief transportation official. I'm going to introduce Matt McDonald, but I just want to kind of preface this item by saying that we're extremely happy that the rail committee has convened this morning. We brought Matt McDonald, Matt McDonald, on a couple months ago. We've given them very limited notice to proceed on data collection, analysis of existing conditions, and we've held off on the bulk of their tasks, awaiting direction from the rail committee. So, the bulk of what they're going to present this morning is draft, just to bounce something off of you, get your feedback. Our ultimate goal is this, is this for, to be a very cooperative process, where we have kind of defined decision points as we move forward in this process, and Matt McDonald and staff is able to give you all the materials that you need to make decisions as we move through this process. So, they're going to touch on a draft schedule that outlines the next two years of work that we foresee in order to advance the grade separation projects. They're also going to present a preliminary community engagement plan that is just intended to be a framework, and given the feedback we've heard this morning, it sounds like we need to do additional work to integrate CSS principles more thoroughly into that plan. And then, lastly, they're going to touch on scope of work for what's called the circulation study, which was, if you remember, when we went to council last year, one of the directions we got was to undertake what's called a circulation study, which you'll see from the scope is intended to be kind of a high-level first look at how the grade separation, the grade crossings currently operate, how they would operate if we modified each of the different grade crossings in different formats. So, with that, I'll introduce Matt McDonald. It's going to take a moment for me to get their presentation set up.
You guys could come up to the table, if you want.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Chris Metzger, I am the regional divisional manager for Mont McDonald. Excited to be here. Thank you for allowing us to partake of this process and help you through it. I'm, I personally am excited to be back in Palo Alto. Last time I was here for extended duration was helping with Homer Avenue undercrossing. So hopefully this will all turn out as well as that project did. So I was a project manager for that. So Josh already walked you through what we, we want to talk through this morning. And you've already kind of heard about what our mission, one of our missions is, is to help you coordinate with all the different entities that are working on this. So I think this should all be very familiar to you. I don't know that we need to spend a lot of time with that. Just wanted to introduce our team a little bit. As I said, I'm the principal, but I also will remain directly involved in some of the outreach, or all of the outreach, given, given some history here with the city and other experiences. Having recently worked with Mountain View extensively with the water district to try to get some projects done that were very challenging in the middle of very involved communities. So that's one of the things I'll be doing, is staying involved in that process with you. Richard Davies is the project manager with, with years of experience in transit and other, and similar traffic and transportation-related projects, currently working for other local agencies for high-speed rail throughout the state. So he has a good perspective of what's going on throughout the state with high-speed rail, and how that's impacting multiple communities. And Michelle DeFrancia, who you've already heard from, is, is really going to be our day-to-day contact here at the city, and will be attending most of the agencies. So with that, Richard's going to walk you through the scope of services of that Josh mentioned.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Richard Davis. So, so the overall project is split up into nine separate tasks. Task one, clearly is, is why we're here today, to talk to you. And task two, and we'll be waiting for your direction on some of the stuff. Essentially, as Josh said, we've done a lot of groundwork and a lot of preparation, so that we are in a position to take this, this forward. And we've also had our environmental people look at the, the scoping document from the high-speed rail. Perhaps the most work there was probably gone into task four, which is the conducting the circulation studies. And we've done a lot of preparation work on that. We're very conscious how important circulation is and the impact that changes in the upgrade crossings may have on the city. And as I'm sure you know, we're looking at going up from six services in the peak hour up to 20, and that's a very significant impact. So I'll be touching on how we're going to cope with that. The further tasks, five are, as been now discussed, to carry out the CSS process with the alternative analyses that we jointly come up with, which we'll be providing all the information for you to review and make judgments on. Then six goes into a rather more process basis, which is looking at the project study report and the 15% design plans on the alternatives. That's followed, of course, by the environmental analysis of those alternatives in the full sense of the word. And we're also looking at the financing and funding side as part of the overall evaluation of this project. Task nine is someone, something of a bucket, because we all know that when you get going on these projects, things happen that may not be forecast or anticipated. And therefore, there needs to be some flexibility of perhaps reviewing some particular issue or whatever. So task nine is generally that sort of bucket for additional work, or if more alternatives need to be viewed, it's that sort of thing. So that, that's our schedule. I mean, clearly we're also something of a hostage to fortune in terms of what may happen on the high-speed rail. But you can see on, on task one, we're fixing for the monthly meetings that we'll be attending. Task three is something that we're getting going now. And task four is the one we've already started. And then there are the others ones below that, which I won't go through in too much detail, but they are yet to be agreed and taken forward with, with your direction on that. So, summary of what we've done so far. I think Michelle covered a little bit of that. You know, we've, well, not a little bit, a lot of it. We've been attending basically all the meetings that are relevant to taking this forward. And so that we know everything that's going on, from Caltrain, from high-speed rail, from other cities. And as you rightfully said, some cities are in advance here. So it's good to learn what they've done. So we can, hopefully, if they did make a mistake, we don't make the same ones, and taking that forward. So we're working closely with all of them, and we're all circled in on the loop of information. So we can pick up everything that's going on to be able to provide you with the best level of information that's available. We've also been talking to Nadia, various others in terms of interest groups to take this forward, so we can get the best possible picture. And we have responded to some of the documentation and things that are raised during the last few months, which you have in your, your package in there. Also, we've drafted a community engagement plan, which I think will obviously be open to considerable discussion, listening to what was said first thing this morning. I just want to talk briefly about the circulation studies, because that's what we've done most work on. As I say, we're very conscious of the issues which could come up by having different alternatives with grade separations or existing upgrade situations, and also of the, the impact on the traffic circulation that increased frequencies from Caltrain and high-speed rail will have in, in the future. So we've set up a GIS-based map. We always use that as a database, because you can load anything into that that you like. And we'll, you'll perhaps see more of that as we progress. But that setup, you can see the sort of blue areas, the half-mile sort of round, the study boundary of, of the intersections. And that's the one we'll be looking at in much more intensification. But clearly, we're looking at strategic effects as well. I'm just moving on to that. So this is what we've been doing. We set out having a data review. So we picked up everything we think's relevant in terms of recently collected data and previous studies, and we've been through that. We then had a look at what data was available and decided where we felt new data needed to be collected. And so that's actually happened this last two weeks. So we've had new traffic count data done on all, most of the important intersections that we're looking at. So we have the absolute best amount of data available. We're also looking at collision data review. Accident analysis is very important to these sorts of evaluations. And as well, also, we've been looking and compiling the pedestrian and bicycle data. And that's something that can be laid into our GIS mapping, so we can lift that up at any time that we need. We've done a lot of work now on the, the travel demand model. That will be one of our basic analysis tools. It will allow us to see what may happen with the different alternatives of grade separations, and the impact on the highway network. And we're very conscious of potential congestion that may cause or may not cause or relieve. And if you have grade separations, that's attract more traffic in, as opposed to if you don't have one. So it's, it allows us to paint the overall picture of the reaction and response of the highway network within the road traffic on it. So I just thought I'd show you an example of what we've called a congestion map there. And I'm not sure how familiar people are. We're looking at these types of, these types of diagrams. But it's essentially looking at the road network in 2030. And you, the color coding, as I say, it's a congestion map. So unsurprisingly, it's a sort of traffic light approach. So red means it's highly congested, and green means much less so. So it's a very clear way of looking at exactly what is happening in a network. And that's, that, that model has no recognition at the moment of the future increased services for Caltrain and high-speed rail. But it allows us to identify all the issues that will be associated. Also, we will use it to forecast the growth in traffic that we'll be using the intersections. So that, that's the same map, but it's just, what I wanted to show you was, we can do it at any scale, you know, right down to a very detail, from right up to a whole peninsula area. And that allows us a lot of information to be presenting to you on what the impacts of these various different things will be.
Is that with or without grade separation?
Without, without.
With, yes. So that's basically based on the, the comprehensive plan. And as Michelle says, it's, it's a sort of do, do nothing but forecast to 2030 from that point of view. So these are some of the deliverables we've, we've achieved already. So as I said, we did a review of the existing documentation. We did a gap analysis to find out what additional data we need. So that was completed this month. We're working at the moment on an existing conditions report, which just paints the overall background picture before we start looking at what impact grade separations may have, and what not having them may have to. Travel demand, validate, well, we've, we've mounted the model on our computer. We've got it running, and we've compared it, we've looked at it to look at how it responds to the sort of local count data, and we're happy it's the right tool to be using for this sort of analysis. It is, though, a strategic type of model. We're approaching it differently for the detailed intersection analyses. And that's going to be based on the intensive traffic counts that we've had over the last couple of weeks. So we would be doing this standard sort of process of building a, a future year with no build conditions, but with the new frequencies of Caltrain and high-speed rail imposed on the grade crossings. So we're developing the model to reflect that, and that will be the sort of first run we do. From then on, we start looking at the alternatives and, say, having two grade separations, or one, or three, and running models to show the impacts of those different combinations and permutations. That will lead to an ability to decide on a preferred alternative, or a number of alternatives. And that leads us on to the various reports that will be coming from that. And the final one is, is the circulation report, which we'll be producing fairly late on in the ship, later on from him now. Okay, so I'd now like to hand over to Michelle, who's going to talk to you about the, our draft community engagement plan that we've had so far.
Thanks. Thanks, Richard. The goals and objectives of the draft community engagement plan include implementing a CSS process using detailed community engagement, which we think, of course, we all agree, is extremely important, provide clear, accurate, and easily accessible information to the public, create platforms to evaluate the various grade separation alternatives, and also develop performance measures to assess and adjust our engagement efforts. Stakeholders and concerns to be addressed. Our key stakeholders include, of course, Palo Alto residents, including senior citizens, residents with special needs, disadvantaged residents, regular transit riders, or we want them to be engaged as well, Palo Alto elected officials and staff, local organizations from the business community, nonprofits, and community-based. Concerns to be addressed include the lack of safety around grade crossings. I think we're all too familiar with that, unfortunately, as well as the traffic congestion around the crossings, noise pollution, inconvenience of construction activities, and inequality of costs and benefits. Engagement tools. We'll be developing a database so we can track and record public commentary. Online survey, we'd like to implement an online survey via email, website, and social media. Collateral, we'll be developing fact sheets, emails, website content, and text messages, project mailings, flyers, notifications, and community meetings. We want to cooperatively develop a project goals and objectives, working with the community, define and evaluate the alternatives for grade separation, involve the community and city council, and a clearly defined decision-making process. Establish CSS process, milestones, and decision points. We've talked a lot about that already this morning. And we are proposing to hold six community meetings over the next year or so. We're also proposing that we hold the first community engagement meeting in April. Rail technical group, that's our task two. Here are a few ideas of potential members, including representatives from CARD and Friends of Caltrain. We've been in contact with both groups. The pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee, Palo Alto residents, elected officials and staff, technical experts, and local organizations, again, from business, education, environmental, community-based, and nonprofit. And we're open to your suggestions as well. At this time, I'm going to hand it over, back over to Josh.
Great, thank you. So at this point, we'd like to have a, you know, a pretty robust discussion with you about what was just presented by Mont McDonald. Some of the things that we'd like to talk about, and I'll show you, I'm sure you'll have more topics that you'd also like to address. But our idea for the community engagement plan is to get your feedback today, and then return to you with a final draft. And I think, given what we've heard today, it may make sense to consult with People for Public Spaces on CSS, and make sure that we bring back to you a, a public engagement plan that meets all of the standards of a typical CSS process. We don't exactly know how detailed the community engagement plan should be at this point. You know, things are given to change as we start to roll this out to the public, and we start to, you know, garner feedback from our residents and other stakeholders. We would like to hold the first public meeting in April. We don't want you to feel rushed, but we do need to get this project moving forward. So the schedule that Mont McDonald presented tentatively shows a public meeting occurring in April. We'd love your input as to what that public meeting looks like. Is it just a very high-level introduction? Do we focus on refining the CSS process, identifying stakeholders, or do we move a little bit further along and, you know, bring some of the results from the circulation study forward? The rail technical group, as Michelle mentioned, is one of the tasks that were identified by council back when we brought this to you last year. The rail technical group was intended to be a group that supports your work in this process. We've had some additional discussions around what this group would look like. And one of the components of a CSS process is the formation of a stakeholder group. So it may make sense for this rail technical group to be that CSS stakeholder group. But we're open for your, you know, suggestions on that as well. Also, we need to talk about how we appoint this group. Is it done by the rail committee? Is it done by the full council? Would you like staff to bring you a list of potential candidates? Do we have an applic, a formal application process? And then finally, the rail corridor study, circulation study. What are the goals of the circulation study? To date, we've assumed that this would be a study that looks at a very high level at the circulation of the city's surface transportation network, and then identifies what the impacts to that circulation network would be if, hypothetically, if one grade crossing was closed or made bike-ped only, or if an existing narrow grade crossing was widened to accommodate additional traffic, at the same time, you know, another may be closed. What does that look like for our surface transportation network? So that was the original intent of the circulation study. And that would enable us to have the tools we need to start to identify a kind of more firm alternatives for each of our four grade crossings. And then, you know, we'd like to know how far we can continue on this study. And then, you know, we'd like to know how far we can continue on this study. We've already done all of the data collection and the existing conditions analysis. And then lastly, you know, if we start to develop these alternatives to model, how does that vetting, what does that vetting process look like for the alternatives? Do we go to council? Do we use the public at the public meeting in April to help identify those alternatives? Or is that something the rail committee mainly focuses on? So those are some of the items for discussion that we've identified, but, you know, I fully expect that you'll also have additional items.
Maybe I can just add a couple more thoughts on background on these two issues of the rail technical group and the circulation study. The rail technical group was really an idea that came from this committee, recognizing that there are a group of passionate and very well-informed stakeholders in the community that may be of assistance to the committee and to staff. I think the idea was, and again, from the committee, that there'd just be a handful of these, you know, real experts in the community that could meet on a regular schedule with staff and maybe in the same kind of monthly rhythm as the rail committee. So we, as staff, would convene this group a few weeks before the rail committee, and they would help us prepare and vet issues that are coming to the committee. So my impression when this idea came up is that it was more informal than, you know, council-appointed stakeholder group. It was more something to assist all of us in doing our work. The other point on the circulation study, again, this was the direction of the full council. My impression was that the council wanted us to quickly gather and develop some data that could be an input to the CSS process. So it was something that wouldn't, like, be held up waiting for the CSS process to begin, but it would generate some data that people could start to chew on at the first kind of discussion of community objectives and how we're going to proceed with the larger development of alternatives for the grade separations themselves.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Chris, Richard, and Michelle. I'd like to maybe do, again, a round of technical questions first and then go to the public before we get into the discussion. Do you guys have any questions? Adrian?
Just one. On the community engagement plan, CSS is a big open process, but these are actually very technical changes we're considering. And I'm wondering if you were considering, when you go through this process, kind of presenting alternatives to the public, like whether you're going to guide them on these things, like show them different options, or is it just kind of coming from a blank slate? You know, I think sometimes when you talk about grade separations, folks aren't even clear that, you know, Embarcadero is a grade separation, or, but when you point out Ralston, folks know what that is. So I'm just wondering about that.
Maybe I can start, and then everyone can chime in. But, you know, I think we understand that we're going to need to start with a little bit of explanation about grade separations, what we're doing. But I think really the place you start any process like this is a discussion of community objectives. You know, what are the problems we're trying to solve, both as they exist today and as they may exist in the future with increased rail traffic and roadway traffic and demand for people getting across the rail corridor in a variety, on a variety of modes. So that, you know, I think that would be the first step in a community process, and it would be probably a mistake to go to the community right off the bat with a set of alternatives fully developed, without first having that introduction to process, formulation of objectives, and, you know, kind of start from a level of common ground on those issues. I don't know if Michelle has anything to add, or...
I would agree with what was said, although I would throw out that work has been done, as you know, throughout the city. So maybe some historical context as to what has been done would be helpful to explain some of those, like you just mentioned. This is what's been done. This is what a grade separation is. Just some fundamentals to spur the conversation, not to say anything's been done, or, you know, just say work has been done, and this is what it is.
So you talked a little bit about the traffic forecast. What kind of assumptions were you making for future traffic?
Well, the forecast model is built to be compatible with the comprehensive plan. So all the economic and socioeconomic and population deployment forecasts that are in the comprehensive plan are in that traffic model.
So we, now, I think we have five scenarios we're looking at. Are you, what were you using? I mean, we're working on our, we're working on our comp plan update right now, and we have five different growth scenarios.
Just using alternative one at the moment.
Which is as-is.
It agreed, one not approved.
Okay. So...
But again, you know, if necessary, that can be changed, you know, it's not...
Yeah. I mean, scenario one is a required scenario. It's not one that I think council will pick, which is business as usual, right?
Yeah, I think it has the benefit of being one of the larger scenarios when you look at job growth, so it's probably the worst case.
Okay.
It's always a slightly difficult thing, because, you know, if you have nine variables, it's very difficult to manage where your starting point is, so...
There was some, and then in terms of simulating train traffic, I saw in some of the reports there was discussion that some of these models treat it like a freeway, or, I mean, I guess you guys are using the synchro analysis.
We will be using a synchro analysis.
Yeah, so what are the strengths and weaknesses of that approach?
You have to set it up correctly for the train side, because synchro doesn't represent the train use that well. But we have done an awful lot of work on street-running LRT systems in both Canada and the US, so we're very used to balancing out the road traffic signals and the train traffic signals. So that's an area where we have some very high specialists and staff. So we're working on that now, so we can develop the right sort of delay situation for the synchro model to cope with. And we've done it before, so we're quite familiar with how we need to do that.
Okay.
Again, you know, synchro is a much more higher-level precision model than the traffic demand model, but the ultimate at the end of the day, I suppose, is the microsimulation model, which is the next one. But that tends to come when you finalized your preferred alternative, and then you want a more detailed analysis.
So the microsimulation model, is that, is that kind of like a Monte Carlo simulation? Or is it using averages?
It's a completely different sort of model to a demand model. It does actually simulate the movement of individual vehicles as opposed to flow vectors.
Cool. That'll be good to see. I think also, you know, these traffic reports seem to be very technical. Are you guys going to do any kind of visualizations for us and for the community to show what this means?
Yeah. I mean, one of the key things is to be able to interpret it, interpret those models and present them so they can be understood, and that's something that we spend a lot of time on, so...
One of the exhibits Richard showed was the colored roadways. We would simplify that down and show the impacts on that and take that data and simplify it down into simple graphics that...
Okay, I mean, it'd be awesome if there's a way to even show renderings of traffic. One thing on those images you showed, I know, like, Oregon and El Camino is a Level F intersection, but it looked like in your forecast it was green. So I didn't really understand what you were using for green and red, if, is it tied to level of service, or...
You mean in the environmental, the environmental document?
The traffic charts that you showed.
So the travel demand model only shows the volume over capacity ratio of a link? It's not as detailed as to look at the intersection operations? So synchro would look at actual intersection operations?
Okay.
So the map is more representative of the links that are shown, not the actual nodes?
Okay. I mean, so we have a lot of red nodes that look like they were in green links, which I don't really understand. And then I also saw circle point mentioned several times in the proposal. What, who are they, and what do they do? Or what is that?
Circle point, as I said, for public outreach. They will be leading the outreach effort, working with Michael Baker and our team. Help with a lot of the collateral materials and developing and organizing the programs, setting up dates, and sending out flyers, and a lot of that work that needs to be done.
And then last question, there's also assumption about C-Boss, and I'm wondering if you guys are looking at, you know, what if, what if C-Boss is late or fails? Like, how does that impact circulation?
I don't think we've gotten to that point yet in terms of C-Boss and the impact on the circulation study.
Okay. So this gets to, like, how are you modeling the trains?
It's not that, but the demand model isn't that precise. We will be making overall estimations of the delay that will be caused, which really may not be so much sensitive to something like C-Boss, but more sensitive to the actual frequency schedule.
So my understanding of the C-Boss system is one of the potential benefits of it, if it works properly, is that if a train is going to stop and dwell at a station, the gates ahead will know that and not activate like today. If there's a station in close proximity to a crossing, the sensors for the crossing don't necessarily know that the train is going to dwell at the station. So there may be reduced gate time, gate downtime with C-Boss, but I think that, and that would need to be modeled somehow, but other than that, I don't necessarily know that there'll be much impact to the circulation.
That's exactly my question. So if it doesn't work and the gates are down longer, are we including that in our simulation?
It'll be as today. You know, it'll be, we'll have to multiply the operations today by the increased number of trains in the corridor.
And it's, it gets to, you're saying, basically, the model doesn't deal with it at that level, right?
It's the worst approximation, right?
I mean, a lot of criticisms in the past have been, you know, trains leaving simultaneously and not really modeling the train behavior correctly.
So we will take all that into account, you know, the greater efficiency, or if it turns out not to be, not.
So Richard can, you know, jump into this if he wants, but one of the issues with the standard traffic modeling software is it doesn't have that randomness. When you model an intersection in synchro, you know, you set all the parameters for the signal, but it can never account for emergency preemption. It can't really account for train preemption if the train's not running on schedule. So there's a certain amount of randomness that we're not going to be able to account for when we get down and do this modeling. We'll try our best, but it's, at the end of the day, it's going to be really difficult to do that.
Any more questions? I guess we'll take comments from the public. Herb Borack, sir, for speaker. Thanks.
We're on item two, which has four bullet points, and you've just been discussing just the first bullet point. But rather than submit a card for each bullet point, I thought I was supposed to submit a card just for the agenda item as a whole, so I'll try to fit them all in in my time. The first thing on grade separations is the comment I indicated in my letter that Lenny Siegel had made at the Local Policymaker Group, is that you want to look at the entire corridor for the rail. I mean, you don't want a situation, you have to take into account the grade, not just the grade separations, but also whether the train's going down and back up again, because you're only doing one at a time rather than doing all of them, and you have to do it in concert with what's going on elsewhere along the line. And that for the train to get its best performance, you want to have that grade separations everywhere. Secondly, in funding, I think we should still put forward the fact that it is the lead agencies for the train projects who are the, should be the major source looking, and the first source looking for funding. And since we're still doing the high-speed rail, EIR, that should be something that we should be looking on as mitigation from them. In regard to the agreement between Caltrain and Union Pacific, as far as I know, there isn't anything as a signed agreement yet. They have deal points, they may still be negotiating, and they won't release those. If someone else hasn't updated something in writing, not just a statement that was made in the minutes of Caltrain or the Local Policymaker Group, but really an agreement where both sides have signed it, that we should see that. Until then, there is no agreement to talk about. Finally, perhaps we could get a report from the Local Policymaker Group specifically on the status of the proposal to get money from MTC to do a toolkit, which would be something that would be at a higher level, you know, before individual cities are doing any great, grade separation studies. Context-sensitive solutions means different things to different groups. Originally, we're talking about it as something for Caltrain or high-speed rail for the entire project. From high-speed rail's perspective, the only thing they're concerned about with CSS is for intensive development with it having stations for high-speed rail. And here, we're talking about it just for grade separations rather than looking at the whole line. I think we should still push for high-speed rail to be doing it for their whole process. Finally, rather than setting some objectives and narrowing down what the public is doing, it should come from the other way, having those community meetings lead to what those objectives are. Thank you.
Next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Nadia Nyak.
Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. Sorry to miss the top of the meeting, but there should be a New York Times article about the Caltrain electrification funding issue coming out this weekend, which hopefully will have accurate information about that topic. So wanted to second what Nadia had talked about in terms of having a context-sensitive solutions process and support learning more about that. With regard to the grade separations, I was in the list of things to focus on. So there were bicycle and pedestrian mentioned in the transportation studies, but that should be a first-class goal, given the importance of walking and biking in this community for health and safety and quality of life, really as a first-class consideration in thinking about the options. Another topic to consider is how these, the different choices and options relate to Palo Alto's land use goals, as they relate to the work on the comprehensive plan, and as they relate to potential financing options. There have been ideas discussed in terms of having parks, having trails, and potentially having buildings where the value of the building can contribute to the cost of a project. And those are the topics of the land use goals and the financing options would be important to consider in this project and important to assess in terms of the community goals and values. And thanks very much for coming up with a process to take into account the community input from all these different perspectives, including the driving and quality of life and walking and biking, and also the quality of the rail service that will be affected by having the grade separations over time. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Nadia Nyak, followed by Roland Lebrun.
Hi, so I emailed some of my comments today, but I just want to add to it based on the conversation we've been having today. So I wanted to thank staff and everybody. I mean, the RFP process, you know, the rail committee didn't meet since last September, and they basically haven't had a meeting since then. So you guys have all been doing a great job flying completely blind, because the RFP went out, it was kind of a placeholder, because we weren't sure if we were going to get an actual person that was going to work at the city, or if we were going to get consultants. Obviously, when you go through an RFP process, you've got to specify a lot of stuff so people can bid on it. So it's been a great straw man. But I feel like in listening to what's going on with this conversation, I'm starting to get a bit of anxiety, because we're so far from what the council had said initially. I mean, you guys are talking about gathering data and then figuring out a way to then go and present it to the community, engage with the community. It's kind of the opposite of the way CSS is supposed to work. When we have the CSS process, you're going to figure out what the vision, who are the people who are going to be involved, what's going to be our visioning statement. It's a very rigorous process. It is a very timed process. It's not a four-year thing. When this is done well, you decide ahead of time, before you've gone through all the data, where are going to be your decision points? Who's going to make those decisions? How long is it going to take, and in what time periods? And then you go and sort of deploy the resources of, okay, we need a traffic study by this date, we need this by this date. But the way you guys have kind of worked this now, and I understand we need some data, but you've got to understand, this is the same problem that we as advocates... but you've got to understand, this is the same problem that we as advocates run into all the time. I get a high-speed rail study that shows me, oh, here's the traffic analysis. And I can poke 15 holes in it because they didn't look at some things that we as citizens value that, you know, the engineers just looked at the traffic. And you've seen Palo Alto citizens before, you know how this works. That is not going to fly. If you have this traffic study and nobody looked at, for example, the possibility of maybe you close Churchill and you straighten out and bark at Arrow, and that fixes stuff. And instead, we're modeling all these other grade steps, we're missing stuff. So I think it's important that we get some data, but I can't stress enough that we really have to get a project for public spaces or somebody who's a CSS expert to come kind of help us correct that we're getting this in the right order because otherwise, we're sort of doomed to fail. And this is a biggie, and I think we've all worked too hard, and nobody wants this to be four years. And I agree that we need to move forward, but I think we can do this. But, you know, I'm available, I would love to meet, and I loved Hillary's idea of having regular meetings like we're here. But, you know, I haven't been, I personally have, super happy to see ourselves in the report, but we have been contacted by anybody. I mean, if Friends of Caltrain and CAR is going to be an integral part of this process, we need to be talking to people. I, you know, I just met Mont McDonald two weeks ago. So, you know, I think it's been a great start, and I'm so excited about the energy on this committee, but I think we really have to bring in some experts. Also wanted to ask, in terms of the traffic study, is anybody considering the signaling priority that the buses are having in El Camino because that also will affect the traffic stuff? And the other stuff is, you know, remember that a lot of times when the citizens go through this stuff, they're not just focused on traffic circulation. They may decide that really improving Caltrain will actually have a great impact on traffic flow as well. And so again, that would feed the data study. If we're only looking at 10 trains and the citizens eventually say, you know, we want to optimize Caltrain for 20, that would change everything, right? So you have to think about the fact that the citizens are going to look really broadly, and they may decide, you know what, the traffic study is great, but we need other stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. And last speaker is Roland Lebrun.
Thank you. So first of all, I question through the chair, when you refer to the LPMG, is that a Palo Alto thing or you're talking about the Caltrain LPMG? Okay, thank you. So the first thing I'd like to say about all these studies, which I've been, you know, reading over the years, is that there is no such thing as a four-track grade crossing. A lot of people don't know that, but that basically does not exist. So if somebody comes to you and says, well, we're going to put four tracks to your city, guess what? You get automatic grade separation, right? So that's the first point. But now the question is, okay, well, this is, this is great, this is wonderful, so somebody else is going to do this. And I'd be happy to provide you with the technical references that say that in black and white. Three tracks, yes, four tracks, no. So actually, doing simulations of four tracks is basically is an exercise in futility. But the question is, if you had two tracks, where do you put them? So the initial solution eight years ago, okay, well, we're going to put them on a viaduct somewhere 80 feet up in the air. Well, that didn't fly. Now, if you start looking at Palo Alto and you're talking about four tracks and you have to grade separate this, oh, boy, and you have a problem. I mean, you know what Alamo looks like, I looked at this three years ago, that's just not going to work. So another alternative I think you should be considering is maybe you should underground the additional two tracks. And then what you come up with is a new concept, which is a hybrid, which is actually is a context-sensitive solution for the Palo Alto Alamo context, where you essentially grade separate the bikes and the pets. And every train that doesn't stop in Palo Alto and Manolo Park basically goes into a tunnel. And before anybody tells you it's too expensive and you cannot build it, I'd be happy to provide you with accurate information on that. And at that point in time, what you actually do is you have actually reduced the train traffic that currently goes through the tracks. You're actually going to allow more traffic, up to 10 or 12 trains an hour, but the number of trains that cross your level crossing is going to be reduced. So anyway, that's an alternative I think your rail technical group should be looking at some point, and I'd be happy to provide input. The last point I have is about the funding, and I'm glad that Borak mentioned MTC. This is exactly what San Francisco did for their wrap study and the downtown extension. So far, they've raised $1.5 million through three different grants to study 1.5 miles of tunnels. And I'm sure that Palo Alto could be doing the same thing, and I'd be happy to advocate on your behalf at MTC. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So one thing I'd like to say is it would be great to get presentations like the one you gave today ahead of time if possible, or have handouts. So this is a big item. I'd like to break it up a little bit, I think. I think the first part is really kind of the Mont McDonald scope of work with the schedule, the community engagement, circulation plan, and funding. And then maybe we could talk about the Caltrain-UP agreement separately, so it seems a bit separate from the others. So first of all, you know, we, council requested a train expert, and we put out that RFP, and I'm glad to have you guys on board. Really looking forward to working with you guys on this. So anybody want to start off with comments? Questions?
Good. Adrian. One quick comment. I'm not sold on whether the technical group should be its own independent thing or is the CSS stakeholders group. So just floating that to you all. I think it does sound like there are some interested folks who would love to help staff, and staff seems interested in hearing from them. I worry if we have, you know, a technical group and a CSS stakeholders group, if they're not just overlapping anyways, and they shouldn't just be the same thing in the end.
So a couple of things. I mean, I think at the end of the day, what we're looking for is to have community buy-in and have an understanding of what these grade separations will look like. I mean, I think that's the goal. I assume everyone on this committee shares that goal. So the question is, how do we get there? And how do we make those tough choices? And how do we not get sidetracked and lost? And I was really concerned a little bit about Nadia's statements regarding that she thinks we're doing context-sensitive solutions incorrectly and that. So I do think we need to get, you know, that group before us and get a sense of how that goes. I'm also sensitive to the fact of getting lost in a stakeholder group, frankly, and all the staff effort and time that goes into dealing with that. And I think these all have to be balanced. And I'm not sure what the right balance is, and I'm sort of looking for staff to be a little assertive here, frankly, and say, you know, this is how we would like it to go, while also being sensitive to what the placeholder group says and how context-sensitive solutions to work. I mean, at the end of the day, if this is going to work, we're going to need community buy-in, and we're going to need, and we obviously can't shortchange that process. And if it takes longer because we have to spend more time on that, I think we're going to have to spend longer and do that. But that also means in my mind that there may be lots of different choices in how we do the grade separations. And that's why I said we needed to go through the original guiding principles. There's a couple of guiding principles in there, you know, which, for instance, says we would not close any grade crossings. Well, we may want to look at closing a grade crossing. We may want to look at doing, in some place, rather than doing a bunch of eminent domain, it may make sense to have an aerial track. I mean, that may be the worse, the lesser of two evils. I do think we need to somehow decide, and I think the community's going to want to know this, can we underground the tracks? I mean, that's the easy solution, that's the one that has the less impacts, it's probably also the most impractical, but it may not be. But I think we're going to need to make that decision early because that's what everyone would want to do. I don't see us not wanting to do that. And then I think we need to come up with a timeframe about where we get to a solution. And I like Nadia's comments about it's a formal process, and there's decision points along the way and that. And that's what I'm looking for. And I, I do worry that if we do it the way we normally do it, we may not get there and we may get stuck in the process. And so that's what I'm looking for us to do, is to be really thoughtful on that. So it's hard for me to go through this and have comments yet because I don't really feel like I have enough information. And I think that's why you're hearing a little bit of silence from the committee because as we go through this and you look at it, it's, it's hard yet to say, yes, we're comfortable, this is where we want to go. So that, I guess that was really my, my thoughts to start on that.
Yeah, this is a big item. We might go around it a couple of times, I think. Eric, do you have comments?
I have the first item.
Well, this is, okay. So actually, kind of broke this down by kind of the tasks. So I think, you know, your task one is supporting the rail committee. Yeah, I think one thing to be really useful is if you can let us know where we can, as electeds, can most impact the process, particularly with all these other cities considering grade separations. That's something you can kind of assign to us to go talk to other electeds in other I also think there's kind of a broader issue here that this is a huge project, we want to make sure we use you guys effectively. And so I'm happy that every, every meeting, we're getting an update on status and kind of what you guys have been working on. I think we need to be careful that we don't burn too much funds upfront before we really get into this process, so I hope you guys are sensitive to that. I thought, I thought I read that you guys will be representing the city at Caltrain meetings and possibly high-speed rail meetings. Is that correct? So I have, I have questions, how that's going to work. I mean, hopefully, you're not going just to listen and document, but we need advocates of those meetings who are going to speak up. And so it's, it's kind of a question for staff and, you know, I hope that staff will be there and will be able to speak up when needed, right?
Yeah, we review all of the agendas beforehand, and if there's any things that, you know, we need to offer input into or feel that we need to give direction, we provide those comments to Mont McDonald. And then, you know, if it's a major issue, I would attend, or, you know, one of the other staff members would attend in lieu of Mont McDonald.
Okay. Well, so I just want to caution us not to be too reliant on that.
Could I follow on that? Because you made a really good point.
Yep.
I think we should have a little bit of oversight and a little bit of understanding about how you're spending the money, what meetings you're going to. You know, I mean, I, I'm not sure I see a huge value in sitting through a lot of meetings, frankly. But there may be. I mean, the question is, is, I think we'd just like to have a sense on the burn rate, at least I would, and what we're doing so that we don't end up saying, you don't come to us halfway through and say, we're going to need to expand the amount of money coming through.
So task two, the rail technical team, I agree with, with Adrian that I think we need to look at that within the CSS process and see, you know, how it makes sense. There's great input from a whole bunch of people. Definitely want to leverage it, but in the right way. I didn't really have any comments on the, on the environmental analysis yet, that's... So on the circulation study, task four, I already mentioned the kind of concern about CBOS and where that fits into our simulations. It'd be great if you can, you know, clearly show all the assumptions that go into the traffic model, particularly when we're presenting it to the public. I appreciated seeing the area you were considering and that it extended to El Camino, I believe. I do think maybe it should extend to Middlefield Road on the other side. It looked like it stopped just short of those intersections. And on Meadow in particular, I think we already have traffic backed up between the train and El Camino Way. I was a little bit concerned about the schedule, and maybe I just don't understand the circulation report, but it looked like you were going to show alternatives, you know, by March this year, which is now. And I wasn't really sure how that was possible or if that schedule was correct at this point. Could you guys talk to that?
That's a draft schedule, and, you know, one of the items that we would like feedback on today is how do we develop those alternatives for the circulation study and...
It just seemed like it was way front-loaded, like we needed all the alternatives now.
Well, and again, I think we're looking for the committee's direction. The full council directed us to undertake the circulation study really in advance of the CSS alternatives analysis for the whole project. So, you know, if you want to revisit that instruction and kind of hold that, we need to hear that. Otherwise, we're going to have to tell Mont at McDonald what to analyze.
So are there a list of alternatives?
Well, I think we are thinking right now, we're going to have to develop that, and we want to know whether that's something you would support. Some of them have been mentioned here, you know, close Churchill, widen, existing grade cross, you know, retrofit existing grade crossings or grade separations. You know, it'd be a series of if this, then that kind of options.
Okay. So if I could jump in, make a couple of comments that might be helpful to try to put some context on this. First, we knew this was going to be a media agenda, and so I think we're really illustrating that because this is an opportunity, maybe a little more messy than would like to acknowledge that there are a number of different dimensions here. And I actually didn't think I'd be putting my traffic engineer's license to use quite yet, but believe it or not, it's a little more familiar than I'd like. The, the circulation study, I do think we're going to need to come back and perhaps be a little clearer, both in terms of the specific methodology, but also the limitations and how some things, everything from CBOS to the UP agreement will have an impact ultimately on the level of analysis that it would be take to actually really drill down on some of these things. But, you know, I think we can, we can address that in due time. I do want to clarify that on the community engagement, that staff had envisioned the technical group really as a way, quite frankly, of addressing some of those technical questions before it comes to the council, to the committee, and flesh out those more specific detailed questions that we know some of our community members are interested in getting into the specifics so that for the committee and ultimately the council, that we wouldn't have to have a real detailed kind of technical discussion here. There was not really a specific stakeholder group suggested. I will say, and appreciate Nadia's sharing, she sent it to us, and she might have sent to full council video clip. So I actually watched most of it out of, I think it's University of Portland or up in Portland to describe the CSS process. And I'm by no means an expert or even necessarily really familiar with the process, but it does really start with, as Hillary described, the problem definition and really focusing in a very highly engaged method in how that problem is defined and ideally agreed upon from a variety of perspectives. So I think the circulation study work that has been done to set some baseline data so we can be quantitative in assessing that, as well as taking our appropriate next steps into the community engagement that really focused on problem definition or really where we're at. And so I think based upon this discussion, we've got a number of to-dos and not to cut it off at all, but to just be clear, I think that we get it, related to the role of the committee, the priorities for the committee and the mission, particularly in this year, the, how CSS will fit in that context with a sense of urgency, which I think we absolutely do feel. And so how to basically strike the balance between the CSS process, which could in some ways stretch this out in terms of time, while at the same time recognizing the sense of urgency and an approach that allows that engagement to come together. Because the last thing we want from a community engagement standpoint as well would be for the timeframe to become an issue of attrition and where it's hard for the community to stay engaged with the kinds of issues and the options and some decision-making that ultimately come back to council. So I think we're, we're headed into a ramp up in pace that we're hopefully be able to strike that balance, but it's going to be a pretty intensive year as we look at it.
So thanks for that, Ed. Actually, if I could just, do you want to comment on that particular thing? Sorry, I didn't really get to the community engagement piece yet, but if you, go ahead.
Would you actually want to comment on the circulation study?
Yes, that'd be great.
If that's okay.
I was going to say, yeah, I, that resonates with me. I think, you know, the, we could, we could do a lot of study of circulation, right? And I think, you know, it's important in the context of sort of, you know, how we're going to, you know, make sure we're focused on the right stuff and the consultant's time and so forth. I think it's important that the circulation study stay focused, and maybe this is naive, but stay very focused on helping us support the decision that we want to make. And so it seems to me that the top-level decision is, you know, should we do this at all, right? Okay, that is, if we don't do it, because we're going to spend a massive amount of time and money and people's effort and so forth if we do it. And the top order, top order question is, you know, is it going to be so bad that we need to do this, right? And then if the answer to that one is yes, then the next order question is sort of how are we going to do it? But there aren't really that many options. And I'm going to guess, and maybe this is wishful thinking, but I'm going to guess that the details of the circulation study aren't going to be the most important parameters in the decision of how we do it. It's going to be more like cost, you know, how much of any land do we need to expropriate, you know, impact on the community, you know, what's it going to look like when it's done, what kind of compromise are we going to have to make to pay for it, and that kind of stuff, all of which isn't granular to the, mostly to the circulation study unless there are big differences in circulation based on which approach we choose to do it or which combination of approaches. In which case, I think we need to go there. But short of that, yeah, I think... All of which isn't granular to the, mostly to the circulation study unless there are big differences in circulation based on which approach we choose to do it or which combination of approaches. In which case, I think we need to go there. But short of that, yeah, I think we, the circulation study ought to focus really on how, on supporting the big decisions we got to make. And I think the community will, will find that easier to digest as well.
Yeah, so, so maybe, maybe we'll limit the circulation study to existing conditions for now until we know what the options are. But getting on to the community outreach piece, I think, I certainly think we need, want the homeowners and neighborhoods along Elma and the tracks to be involved. And, you know, just looking at a map, it's, it's like 12 of the neighborhoods. It's probably 50% of the city. So that really wasn't called out in terms of potential groups. I mean, we said residents, but I think it needs to be more specific to, you know, we need people from Monroe Park, downtown, south and north. I mean, all these neighborhoods that are going to be impacted. So again, we've talked about the council has voted and approved CSS process multiple times without maybe us fully understanding what CSS is. I did watch that video as well this morning. It was very good. And that's one of the things I think maybe all of us should do. But it's, you know, I guess one of my concerns is, and I'm being frank here, that McDonald is an engineering company. We may need a CSS facilitator. And I think we should make sure we get an expert in that process and run it correctly. And it's really, as that video talks about, it's kind of the difference between an advocacy process, which I think is what we've outlined with kind of our typical method of getting special interest groups and stakeholders, all have kind of come in with their own point of view versus a more structured decision process. And, you know, we've, I think we need to do the best we can. This is a huge decision. I have, not criticizing, but our standard approach tends to take a long time, takes a lot of money. So I, I'm up for trying something different.
Well said.
So, and I also, you know, as I read more, I've been reading, personally reading about CSS. It seems to be a best practice, the federal level, the state level. And so rather than have this group of special interest groups, I think we need to really think about the process, have a group of stakeholders, have the special interest groups provide input to the process. And then as, you know, as you read through this, if you really do have these decision points and a structured process, you know, it could take, could, it could take nine months. And if we do it right, it's going to save a lot of time versus having a artificially short schedule, getting to the end of that, not being done extending and dragging out for multiple years. So I don't think we should kid ourselves that just because we put a schedule down, that's the shortest route. And so I guess one of the, one of the questions I had and I want to discuss was if there's agreement, you know, what is a quick way that we could get through this? I mean, we've already talked about having a study session on CSS. If we wanted to find a facilitator, do we need to go through a full RFP process? Or is there a way we can shorten that? Because I do think we all want to get going. And just to finish off my comments, so on funding, clearly we have Measure B. We were very clear that we did not want it to be shovel-ready projects, get the money first. I think we need staff to main engage with the VTA, make sure that we, they stick to that agreement. You know, in terms of determining the process, the money would be allocated, it would be great to find out if we could use some of that money for this process, for Mott McDonald and CSS, if we go forward with that. And clearly, we got to be talking about other sources of funding. The schedule itself, I kind of said already, but I don't want to be schedule-driven. I want to be quality-driven. I want to have a realistic schedule and not, the schedule that I see here, I, I already questioned, and I know it was put together a couple of months ago. And so I don't know that we should be driven by, we need final alternatives by November this year. I think we should be driven by, this is the process, this is all we'll take, and we're going to keep it to a reasonable amount of time. Yeah, so those are my comments.
I think Hillary has some ideas around CSS and community engagement, but I'm also prepared to give you an update on Measure B today. I don't know when the appropriate, I can do it right now. So this is all I know about the Measure B grade separations program. It's still in draft format. We've had two presentations by VTA staff, and I've been very firm with them on, you know, the direction we've gone from council. It should not be, you know, whoever's shovel-ready, it should be based on, you know, need and analysis based on, you know, various safety and congestion factors. What they've said to date is that it will be a two-year allocation. So they'll allocate the funds in two-year periods. They're going to work with us and all of the other, the two other cities, Mountain View and Sunnyvale, to develop and implementation plan for the grade separations that are to be funded by Measure B. This will include a fairly detailed cash flow projection for that program. I think when our grade separations will be funded will more likely depend on the cash flow for the entire program as a whole than it will on when we're ready to go to construction. They did say something a little bit concerning to me that I want to put on the table today, which is typically, you know, along the peninsula, the preferred alternative has generally been the hybrid option, which is where the, the rail corridor is raised slightly and the roadway is depressed slightly. Those are running about 125 to 150 million per grade separation. And VTA staff cited that as kind of their baseline for what they might be willing to fund per grade separation. So I think if we're going to do something above and beyond that, we're going to have to have a pretty convincing argument and/or additional funding beyond Measure B. They are willing to fund planning and environmental for those three cities. So, you know, a portion of, you know, the work under this and/or additional work beyond this could be funded by Measure B. They're going to require cities to apply to the Section 190 grade separation program. That's the state-level program that creates a, kind of a top 10 list of grade separations. And there's a tiny bit of state funding that goes towards those. And those are prioritized strictly based on safety issues. So safeties related to the amount of traffic passing through. So I think ours would score fairly high in that. But I could see, foresee a scenario where VTA also uses the similar criteria from the Section 190 program to prioritize the, the grade separations. They're going to require all grade separations to adhere to their complete streets policies. There'll be a 10% non-Measure B, non-VTA match required. So that could be, you know, other state funding like Section 190 or cap and trade or high-speed rail. It just can't come from VTA or Measure B. And then, as I said, they're planning to have discussions with us. So they'll probably visit this committee, talk to staff outside of the structured TAC format, and they'll talk to Palo Alto, Mountain View and Sunnyvale about the details of this program. But that's all they presented to date on the program.
Yeah, just one quick question. I saw somewhere it said like $100 million per grade from the Measure B money. And, you know, if Mountain View's closing a street and things, I, I don't think we should necessarily assume that it's, take the money and divide by the number of grades. But I don't know if that's been part of the discussion.
So if, if you were to do every grade crossing within those three cities, it would be about 100 million per grade crossing. But, you know, some may be closed, some may be just converted to a quad gate, quiet zone type. So I, I don't know that they're just going to take the money and divide it evenly. I think the implementation plan is going to be a little more nuanced than that.
Yeah, so I think what you've just raised is a, is a huge issue. I mean, I don't want to go through a context-sensitive solutions process, have buy-in on, you know, here's what we'd like to do. Everyone wants to do that. And, you know, it'd be a huge struggle. And then VTA say, sorry, this is the way we do it. We do it only this way. So, I mean, I do think we have to be realistic and understand where we are with VTA and, and push that in. And, I mean, we may need to put a lot of pressure on VTA and, and that, that's going to be something we need to focus on as well. Because obviously, we're not going to be in a vacuum on this. So I, I don't know the best way to do it, but this is really not only community engagement, but I guess VTA engagement the entire way through this process. So I don't know if that affects how we do this or affects the schedule or whatever, but I'd like staff to really, I'd like staff to really think about this in terms of how we integrate all these components. And they're moving components, which makes it even, even harder. So.
I love this part of a process when you're, you know, you're just starting out and you're figuring out what could go wrong and you're trying to set it up so you have all of the eventualities covered. I think your point is a good one. We're going to have to stay on top of these issues. But in terms of designing a process and coming back to you next time with some more information, clearly, one of the steps along this road is identifying constraints, costs, fiscal concerns. All of those things go into an informed decision-making process. So we're going to have to, we'll have to reflect that in the process that we outline for you next time.
And I'd actually like to really second what, what Eric said. I do think that the way this works best is we focus on the big picture items, which is what he said. They're constraints of, you know, cost and, and what the community wants and all of that. I mean, that's, those are going to be the big issues.
So getting back to Tom's question about, you know, how to move this forward, our, you know, we have a lot of resources in the McDonald contract with Circle Point included. Our hope is we could get together with them and reach out to a real, you know, recognized expert in the CSS process, determine what resources we have available in the contract and what resources we need to add to the contract. Maybe there's some things we can substitute out. Come back to this committee with kind of a game plan to present to you at your next meeting and see if we can't get on the same page and, and get moving on something.
That sounds great to me.
I do have one other thing, which is I feel like we got direction from the full council to move forward with this circulation study. So I, I think we will want to bring that back to you next time, as Ed suggested, just a summary of the methodology and some limitations, but also what we might think of as alternatives that would get us more information for future decision-making. And then decide, you can decide at that point whether you think it's worth proceeding or whether we should go back to council and say, look, you directed us to do this, but we're going to hold off and do it a little later.
Okay. So do we need any motions on this item today? Basically, the motion is to come back to the rail committee with a proposal for community outreach for...
I like the word game plan.
Yeah, game plan, basically updated schedule and scope, right? So I guess, could we just make a motion on that, I guess?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right. So the second part of this was the Union Pacific. And I don't know if anybody has any additional questions or comments.
So my, my comment on that is that I think it comes back to, are we going to look at this tunneling? And how do we get that decision point, you know, one way or the other? Because otherwise, that's going to haunt these discussions the entire time with people saying, I want to do a tunnel. And, I mean, so I'm just thinking we need to really focus on that early to decide if that's a route we're going to, because it's a different kind of route. I mean, it talks about, we'd have to get VTA on board, that that's a possibility. We'd have to do all sorts of things. So, I mean, I, I think we need to either, you know, say we're going to move in that direction or try, or we're going to say that's off the table. I mean, I think we need to have that discussion.
So I, I don't think anybody, I know everybody wants to know. I don't know if anybody knows what was agreed to. I think the question is, what constraints is imposed on us in terms of the ability to change the grade of rail so that they've enabled third-party freight operators? And also the electrification, there's been talk about electrified freight. I don't know if that's prohibited now or enabled. I think we need to figure that out pretty quickly. And I know I've been talking to Molly, is there any kind of clock running where we would want to send a letter from the City of Palo Alto to the Caltrain Board asking these questions, just to make sure we understand what options we have or if options have been closed down?
Thank you, City Attorney Molly Stump. We do have copies of some initial documents from Caltrain and Union Pacific, which were obtained by our citizen advocates and forwarded to the city. So we thank them for their involvement in that. The, this, the arrangements are complex. There's an interlocking set of agreements, some of which have been drafted and executed. They're, based on our initial look at this and given the fact that we are not experts in their existing arrangements and the technologies, et cetera. So, so we, we don't have a way to kind of definitively understand exactly at this point the engineering implications. But we don't see that there's any provision in here that speaks directly to the, the grade angle, the 1%, 2%, or that there's any term in here that expressly limits adjustments to that that are reasonable. There is a requirement that the Joint Powers Board operate the line in a way that allows Union Pacific to safely operate its operations. And what we understand from the advocates speaking to Caltrain is they don't believe that the, the type of distinction that we would be looking at to, to have that 2% as opposed to 1 would be inconsistent with that obligation. But this is definitely something for us to, to watch and ask more questions about. And, you know, we're happy to work with the, I think our advocate, citizen advocate experts would be a great resource and the staff to draft a letter from Palo Alto expressing, noting the issue and expressing our concern that nothing be agreed to that forecloses those types of options in this community.
Can I add one thing? And I may be speaking out of turn here. I think, you know, this we're, this is going to be a long process. And at the end of it, we're going to need to have Caltrain look favorably on deviations from standards if we're going to pursue trench. And I think our relationship with them therefore is very important. And I also, I also think in cases like this, it's important to kind of ask a question, ask the question when you know you're going to get the answer you want. So the timing of when we ask particular questions may be important to us strategically and politically. So while we could fire off a letter to Caltrain right now, I just, I just want to think about whether it might be better to, to keep our powder dry, do some more behind-the-scenes analysis. And when we're ready to ask them in a forum where they can say yes to us about this issue, do it then. So maybe just put it, put it off a little bit.
Is there a way that we can get more clarity? I think, again, the message is not to fire something off, but to ask that they really consider the needs of the cities looking at grade separations when they're doing these kinds of agreements.
I think we can try and get some more information using the expertise we have on contract and staff, just staff to staff. Maybe there's a little, you know, rubbing of shoulders we can do and figure out informally, you know, behind the scenes what's going on and, and just start to build more understanding as a technical matter about what we're going to need in terms of exceptions and what the process is and who's going to be the real decision-maker before we get...
This is really about Union Pacific and how hard they are to negotiate with. So we want Caltrain to make sure they're an advocate for us.
That's right.
And then if we now have to negotiate with, with Union Pacific and a third party, it'd just get a lot harder.
I understand. It, maybe it made it a lot harder, but maybe it made it a lot easier. We just, we don't know yet.
Right. Okay. So I guess we have any other comments about Union Pacific or we'll just, I think we'll take your advice.
I guess I would just say that I agree with, with Director Gilman that, that if, you know, we're not used to, we're not used to as a community being in the supplicant position. We like to, you know, fire off letters, tell them what our positions are and all that. And, you know, I would encourage all of you to make contacts with the Caltrain Board members, you know, and talk to them privately about it and, you know, and, and work the, the processes.
I think the issue is just they didn't go to the board. They weren't aware of it even. So, okay.
They're aware of it now.
Yes, they are.
So, you know.
All right. So moving on.
We did raise some speakers on the Caltrain. Do you want to treat that separately or if we wanted to just have...
I think, I guess we'll go ahead and allow it this time, but this was all part of this item. So we'll allow two more speakers on Union Pacific specifically. So Roland and then followed by Nadia.
So the discussion you just had is exactly what this rate technical working group should be. At that, at this point, you had a quite an extensive technical discussion. That needs to be referred to that group with basically it's on the, we want you to look at this and come back to us with a recommendation. And I know you haven't formed that group yet, but my advice to you is that you want some representatives from neighboring cities. You definitely want somebody from probably Atherton. I can think of somebody there. Maybe some Menlo Park, I guess that would be friends of Caltrain. But you want some really highly technical people who have seen this, how it's done. And I'll tell you right up there, from where I come from, is that the trench. and I'll tell you right up there, from where I come from, is that the trench is not feasible. Okay?
So thank you, and thank you for allowing extra comment. So I think procedurally, in the future, when the, when the, when there's sort of subbullets to the super media discussion, it kind of helps to break it up, because otherwise, first a speaker's two minutes is a lot to say about certainly one part and then others. I know, well, thank you. But I would just echo what Hillary said, I don't think we necessarily need to go firing off letters, to Greg's point that we tend to like to do that a lot. I think if you read the board packet for tomorrow's Caltrain board meeting, you'll see my public comments from the previous thing where I pointed out all the things that Roland just said, which is that the board didn't really know, and the staff kind of did this stuff. So they're on notice, but I think certainly through the local policymaker working group and just staff-to-staff connections would be a great way to kind of ask these questions. I think, again, it reiterates the importance of having actual staff be attending those meetings, because otherwise, for example, putting Mount McDonald in that position is sort of awkward. I think the personal relationships that we as city people and as city staff actually have can really be most helpful. I don't, I think it's not a surprise that Palo Alto has a particular reputation when it comes to the train, and so I think we have to be really sensitive to make sure that we continue to stress to them that we love trains, we love Caltrain, yea us, right? So, thank you.
I guess I'll go ahead and allow, Adina, this is the last speaker, Adina Levin.
So a few things quickly on the grade separation. So thank you very much for paying close attention to that grade. One of the things that I've heard is that in that process with UP, Caltrain does have the ability to say yea or nay, and would have the ability to assert the will of the community to enable that 2% grade, and pushing Caltrain to use that ability that it has is important. In terms of the earlier rough cost estimates on doing a trench, as you know, those price tags varied. If you could do the slightly less grade tolerance, the difference is between a billion dollars for, was that two or, was that three? Was that two? You know, versus a half a billion dollars. That is a huge amount of money. So, you know, being able to push for that could make a big difference in terms of something that could be within stretching distance of feasible and not at all. And with regard to electric, that's an interesting question. There's some look at a state level in terms of legislation that would facilitate electrification of freight. The freight on the peninsula is really a very small business considering, so it wouldn't necessarily cost justify on its own, but there might be ways to do it, it's worth paying some attention. And lastly, thanks for the attention to fire off letters. Palo Alto is in a great position in terms of being able to have the attention and technical expertise, and combining that with some diplomacy about how to use it, I think will be very helpful in getting those goals achieved. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we were at the end of the meeting here, we talked about future agendas, do we need any other...
So we have some other topics.
Okay.
So I had some other topics.
Is that under two here?
Yep, that is under two. That's where you put other topics. I think other topics should have been three, but I will, I will go with two. So under other topics, I think Adrian made a really good point. I don't think it should be a focus necessary of the committee, but Dunbarton Rail is getting much more press these days, and I know Facebook did a million-dollar type study of it. This is the rail committee.
That's the SMC TC, or sort of partially funded.
I think the committee should have some sense of what's happening with Dunbarton Rail and should monitor it a little bit. And, you know, I don't want it to take a lot of staff time or anything like that, but we should have some sense, because Dunbarton Rail would actually be as big a boon to Palo Alto as electrification on Caltrain. And so if there is an opportunity to actually make it happen and to support that, we should be doing that. The other thing I think we should do is I would like to put the discussion, understand quiet zones. I think we should do quiet zones. I think there's an issue of timing and money, and it depends on how quickly we go with grade separations versus how long that's going to take, and how much money it costs to implement quiet zones. But I would be all in favor of moving on quiet zones as quickly as we could, assuming the costs are, make sense, and we're not making financially, you know, mistaken. So I'd like to understand that process, and those would be the two other topics I would like to include in this committee.
All right. So with that, I'd say meeting adjourned, and we'll see you guys in a couple weeks.